Everyone, I hope you had a good Fourth of July, Independence Day, as Susie Schreiber would remind me. I'd like to call this meeting to order, ask everyone to please mute your cell phones and other electronic devices, and I'll ask Rob to do a roll call for attendance.
Thank you. Trustee Apatoff, here. Trustee Handler?
Here.
Trustee Dearborn?
Here.
Trustee Alvinson?
Here.
Trustee Dahlman?
Here.
President Ritz?
Present, thank you. Item two, do we have the sign in sheet? Okay, item two is public comment. This is the time of the evening where anyone who's interested here in the audience can speak to village council on any item that is not on the agenda. So if you're interested in sharing ideas on the post office update, the IME power supply, or terms of office, one more. You'll have to wait for that, but if you're here for anything else, come on up and share your ideas with us. What are you here for, Irene? Okay, good.
Hello. So since giving a name really isn't required, according to the Attorney General, I'm livid, I am livid by the on, because of the ongoing deceit of this village. So we still have to, I'll still have to be coming back to talk about the fact that you gave away, didn't even sell, gave away a sidewalk to private people, did it perfectly, exactly by the rule of the law. No one noticed. Congratulations. But those council minutes are still, don't need to be confidential anymore. You did release one of them. I haven't had a chance to look yet, because of course, I am so busy with everything else. But you know, this little village just keeps lying. You know, Marion Webster defines to creating, to create a false or a misleading impression. We know that that's what's been done. There are emails from the Chief of Police and Community Development talking about the street ends and why they are closed, and those are lies. They do not accurately reflect what the village council itself did 20 years ago. There's our new neighbor, 205, who is building unauthorized structures in the lake. And village engineer lies when he says those structures are approved. Those structures were never approved. They are not approved. It's my understanding that that was a little bit of flurried activity, because they went ahead and did them without approval, and now that people are talking about it, they're trying to figure it out. And it's a lie when a officer of the law, using their state authority, they have real power, advance statements and provide a citation, or issue a citation for a violation of an ordinance that did not happen, right? So I got cited by our police department for walking on public land. And what's fascinating about this is that the ordinance is about trespass, and trespass has to be on private land. And the police officer never put that down, that I was in a construction area, a state construction area where this village has no authority to enforce, the state never gave them authority. But yet, the officer lied, presented misinformation. So now I have to waste my time dealing with this. So I've already filed a complaint. Of course, my complaint probably, I don't have enough money to grease the palms of the machine as much. So my complaint against the complainant saying that they knowingly misrepresented effects probably will never go anywhere. But I'll still file a complaint with the Supreme Court against him since it earned me. And I will file another complaint with the IDNR showing that the applicant at 205 Sheridan is violating the terms of their agreement. Unfortunately, at this point, I am so livid with all this, that I've always wanted to do something in federal court myself. Now, I did have this opportunity in Wisconsin, but then I got a non, I got a, they represented me, so I didn't have to go. So I think I will have to look into filing a Section 1983 complaint for a civil rights violation. And I'm really sorry, because it will go against the officer himself, but it's just wrong.
Thank you, Ted. Anybody else like to address village council? Come on up.
Is this okay?
Yes.
Thank you. Irene Smith, 38-year resident of Weneka. Katie Stevens was going to come here tonight and present these photos to you. I believe you've seen them already. But we're going to give them to you, so that when you have an opportunity to study what's happening on the lakefront, particularly the pollution that we're seeing, you'll have these. So maybe someone can copy them, or whatever. Do you remember seeing this? Okay, so you know, the pollution is that sandy part down at the bottom. No, it's fine. They've seen them. Thank you, Steve. I think you saw this one, right? Okay. There's a lot of pollution happening, but it's not on your agenda at the moment. This one's a little fuzzy, but you can see where the pollution is at the moment, okay? So I'm going to leave these here for you, and maybe sometime when you have the opportunity, you can take a look at them or copy them. I think Katie would probably like them back. So, okay, still okay? So now I'm talking for myself, okay? "I was disappointed when I looked at the agenda for tonight's meeting. I think the post office site and term limits are important, but there's something much bigger and very threatening coming down the pike. The largest village project along the lakefront needs immediate attention. Why is the Elder Centennial project not on your agenda for study tonight? The applications for permits will be in front of village committees and the village council soon, probably within a month. The public deserves to know what actions you are taking to ensure that all efforts are made to inform yourselves about the scope of this project. The Weneka Park District Board assured us for three years that they did not need a coastal engineer to help design the plan, because that step would be done at the village level. The person who designed their plan is not licensed in the state of Illinois. To date, it does not appear that a coastal engineer has reviewed the park district's plan. The health and welfare of Lake Michigan and our coastline are at stake. This should be at the forefront of your study session, not simply an afterthought. We care about the lake. It is the most important resource we have. It is the source of our drinking water, a determinant of our property values, and one of our greatest recreational assets. Please plan a study session to consider what the Elder Centennial Plan is really about. Thank you very much."
Thanks, Irene. Just one point of clarification. We do not, the village does not have in its possession, as of today, a complete application for the improvements at Elder Centennial. There have been submittals, but they are not complete, and we are still awaiting additional information.
Thank you for telling me that, that's-
Before we deem it a complete application and it can begin to move-
Absolutely right. So they have not responded when you sent back their incomplete-
I didn't say that. What I said was, we do not possess a complete application as of this date.
Okay, okay, got it. Thank you.
You're welcome. Next, please.
Hi, good evening. Phil Lenquist, 476 Providence Avenue. A few things. I just, I wanted to congratulate you. I've been wanting to do this for a long time. Congratulate you on the sort of large-scale work you've been doing that reflects a tremendous amount of planning, and an emphasis on the long view for the village. And this includes the streetscape work through downtown, which has been additive year after year. It's obviously shifting the whole identity of the village as downtown, and I think it's a reflection of all of you being very thoughtful stewards of the village. Another one is the West Village Stormwater Project, which I've been watching closely, because I was so concerned about the Crow Island Woods, and you guys figured out a way to bypass the woods and not impact it, and get that stormwater from Mount Pleasant to the west in this whole new created wetland off of Willow. I think it's phenomenal project and very understated. I think it's a landmark project. And it also reflects stewardship and long-range planning. The future post office, I think, sort of fits in with this. Thoughtful planning, next-generation public open space. But the lack of vision around the Centennial Beach and Elder Beach doesn't fit this pattern. It feels confused, fragmented, poorly communicated. And it doesn't fit this pattern that I think the village trustees have really been applying. There is a lack of a long view. You're not quite sure why the design is the way it is. It's a perfect, open, resilient beach today. It withstood the high waters of 2020, 2021. And now we're adding a major stone pier. We're adding quite a amount of high fence material. We're grading into the bluff for an ADA pathway without looking at alternative ADA pathways. I think we need an ADA pathway, but I don't think it needs six-foot retaining walls cut into the bluff. And then, many of us have asked about just the cost, and the cost was 24 million. Then it was 13 million. Then a few weeks ago, it was only 6 million. Radically different cost estimates. So it's like, well, what, what are you really itemizing here? So for the general public, it's been hard to follow, and you do sense that people aren't really listening to us asking just basic questions. And it doesn't reflect what I've seen with these other projects, which frankly, I'm very proud of. And I think the village is better for this kind of long view and long-range planning and investment. So I agree with Irene that I think you guys need to get involved in some way and plan a study session where real alternatives are reviewed, real alternatives, not refinements of one alternative. We've seen one alternative for three years with lots of refinements. But the Park District Board will tell you they're all alternatives. They're really not alternatives. We should look at a non-pier alternative. We should look at a no-grading-of-the-bluff alternative. We should see designs that are less intrusive on this asset we have. So I would just encourage, as Irene said, for you to get involved, plan a study session, and really investigate, maybe with the planning team, bring the planning team back, let's see, real alternatives. Thank you.
Thank you. Anyone else?
Do I have full comments about IME until after?
Yes. Okay, seeing no other people stepping up here, I will close the general public comment, and we'll move forward. Item three this evening is our discussion items. The first one is just a post office update from me, just to kind of give everybody at the table and in the public an idea of where things have been going. I've written down some notes, and just so we keep on track, and Bob, hopefully we have a short meeting, right? But I just wanted to kind of update you. One thing I will say is that the post office project is probably on a par of importance with, let's say, stormwater. I mean, it's just one of those projects that's going to impact our community, hopefully in a positive way, for many, many, many years to come, and it'll, it represents a quasi-completion of the Bennett Plan, at least for this governmental campus area. I believe that we need to have focused, in-depth discussions, both at a committee level and ultimately at a council level. You know, we talked about design the last time. But what I'm, what I'm feeling like is that there's a lot of other things out there in the public discussion we just heard this evening, you know? This is going to dominate the conversation in this community for the next six months. There's no doubt about it. And why we might think we have the bandwidth up here to actually do something, we have to rely heavily on staff to execute a lot of what we need done. And I just do not see a way to move this forward rapidly, or in a manner that would be befitting of the project, to do it piecemeal and come back to it every two or three months, especially when we have a divisive issue in the community that will tend to reflect in other conversations. I've seen it before. When affordable housing was on the table, our ability to get a lot of other important things done was completely, I mean, streetscape was on the, was on the docket back when affordable housing came up. And a lot of the people who opposed affordable housing just jumped on the bandwagon, because it happened to be on the agenda. And it's not that it's a bad thing or anything else, but we just have to be a little bit strategic about having conversations and making sure we can engage the public in a really positive and communal manner, so that we end up with a project that we're all really proud of. So some things I want to update you on. David went out and created a list of, I forget how many, David, nine, 10, 11, of the sorts of firms that we had talked about that we wanted. He then reached out to those firms, and regretfully, I think only four, only four responded positively, and Gang Studio excused themselves from the conversation. I'll take the heat on that one, because I did some things wrong on the preliminary end there that created a situation where they just didn't have the interest that they originally wanted. To be honest, they thought they were going to pick a project up without having to be competitive, I believe. And when we went to a, you know, when it appeared that we were now opening the doors and looking competitively, and I don't blame them, they put a lot of work in upfront. We didn't ask them to, but they did nonetheless, and maybe they just didn't feel that it was a good match. I'm still planning on reaching out to Jeannie to see if there might be some way to revive that. But at this point, we have, you know, four, four teams that we could get information from. David's got some, I believe, right? And we could share that, but the thing that was disappointing is that because I haven't had the time to focus on it as an individual and spend the time talking with these respondents, helping them understand the overall village vision, we ended up with, you know, poor response.
Chris, what, I know Kirk at one point, you, what work did Gang Studio do?
Oh, they did a lot of preliminary sketching and vision stuff. No, because it was inappropriate, because we hadn't been through a process to select, and let me back up, just so you guys all understand how this kind of shook out. David called me and said, you know, do you think somebody like a Gang Studio would be interested? And I, in the back of my mind, I'm thinking, no way. Okay, you know, this is a little park in a little community, and it isn't the sort of stuff that Gang Studio is usually known for. So I gave David permission to reach out, and lo and behold, they had interest. And rather than just coming in and talking, they came to the table with, you know, vision pieces, a proposal for services and the whole nine yards. And it was, would be inappropriate to bring that to the table until we had been through the process. So the conversations were, well, now you have to take a time out, Chris screwed up, we have to go through a process, and deliver more to council than just one proposal. So I'm not saying we can't revive them, but again, fits and starts, and lack of focus on this, particularly on my own part. Already said the lakefront, bringing when controversy is in play. And the last thing that I've been thinking about this, now that we're getting late into my last year, look, having sat here and understanding how important it is from this seat to have the bandwidth to deal with these sort of things is important. And I think it's important that the village president is actively involved and actively supporting projects as they're moving through the process. It's a lot more than, than just being available. I mean, there's a lot of meetings that happen during the week and things of that nature. And the one thing I worry about is building a committee and starting their work, and then having a change in the seat in, what, eight months? And I know if I was walking in the door, I would probably be very appreciative if I had some ability to steer that process, even if I weren't in office yet. And I think to make a good, consistent handoff, that's part of what has to happen. Otherwise, we're going to end up rushing. My tendency would be to hurry up and finish it before I hand it off, but I don't think that's the right thing to do. I think, I think we're going to have to think a lot about how this council will collaborate into the future, and I would like to have whoever is going to be sitting in this chair next to me as we're going through this process, through the next several months, whatever it is, along with Kirk, obviously. So I just want to let you know, I mean, I know there's been a lot of expectations of action, but with everything else going on, and I've taken employment. I don't have 40 to 50 hours a week to give to the village anymore at this point in my, in my time. You've got seven years, but, but, you know, I'm working during the day now, which just takes away some of the ability to do these sort of things, and I'm sorry about it. Because this project, as you all know, I'm extremely passionate about, and would love to see it over the finish line. But I think what's best for the community and what's best for the project is to make sure that we walk through this thing in a careful, collaborative manner, and make sure that we lay the groundwork right, so that we get a good product at the end of the day. And it doesn't turn into a political hot potato that people start arguing about. This is supposed to be somebody, something that everybody is happy about and supportive of, and looking forward to as a, as a really important move in our community. And I just would feel really bad about rushing it and not allowing that to happen.
Yeah. I think it is. I mean, I, I mean, Chris, the last time we had the discussion, when you brought this up, I think it was a really, I mean, council-wide, really positive, that this is, this is an important project, because it is the center of our town, and-
We want to get it right.
And we want to get it right.
Exactly. So expectations were we would move quicker. Reality is, it's going to move slower. I'll report back as, as things develop, and, you know, but at this point in time, first steps will be just to have David circulate what he has already to all of you, so you can start thumbing, looking through it. We'll talk about it in an open session, once we all have a chance to take a peek at it, and maybe start moving forward on that front. So. Breaks my heart. I would have really loved to finish this project, but, you know, other things come in and, and jump in front. They barge in line, so to speak. And I've had COVID barge me, I've had social unrest barge me, I've had Highland Park shootings barge me.
It's a tough one.
Now I got the lakefront.
It's an important project, but you're right. Right now, the lakefront is important and urgent. This is important, not as urgent, but it's still important. So we want to, I, I think we, you may surprise yourself, of the progress we're going to make on doing it.
Well, I'll move it along, I'll move it along on an as-can basis. That's all I can, I can tell you at this point. But I want to make sure the conversations are had in an environment where everybody is thinking positively, too.
Well, let me just throw out a question. Obviously, the post office is planning on moving, I think, that's what I heard. So that building will be sitting there vacant. Would it be possible, anything we would do would require demo of the post office building. Can we just demo and prep the site and just have open land instead of a vacant building? Is that-
It's possible.
You know. Pardon? Well, I mean, we'd have, I guess I'm saying, wouldn't we have to demo the building, no matter what we did? So rather than having another idle building in town, which obviously, we've gotten a lot of negative feedback over, of course, how long Weneka is- that that might be a more palatable temporary situation.
I don't know. The, the current lease goes through the end of January of next year, that extension. So as we look into the budget, we can certainly add some funds for demo and site prep.
Yeah, and that could, that could possibly happen in '25, then.
That's what I mean, just that obviously, we'd have to do it one way or the other, so rather than letting it sit idle, it might be something we should look at.
And Rob makes a good point, you know, we got a budget for it, so it'll be coming up in November, and we should talk about it then, and, and see if we can lay out a plan that makes, makes some sense there. So anyway, that's my, my update on the post office plaza. I just wanted to let you all know. I get asked about it from time to time, and again, breaks my heart that I, I won't be dragging this one over the finish line, but I have to be pragmatic about it and not selfish, so that's what I'm going to do. Okay, item B tonight is the IMEA Power Supply Contract Review, next steps. At the May 14 study session, IMEA representatives presented the new power sales contract and capacity purchase agreement. Tonight, staff will provide a brief update and request input from the council prior to this matter being scheduled for a future agenda. Rob and I met with several other members of IMEA last week, was it? By Zoom, and it's clear that our track isn't as, at least as of today, it's not as complicated and muddled as some of our brethren out in the western suburbs. We've done a lot more thinking about it. We've, we've been able to maintain a very intelligent approach to this. And it hasn't been politicized yet, to the point where it has been in other places, and I'm sure we can expect some of that as well. But it was a good conversation, and it opened my eyes to the fact that we have our stuff together a lot more than several other communities that are dealing with the same problem. So, so the first thing is, Rob's going to go ahead and talk a little bit and ask some questions, and we'll see where it goes.
Obviously, there's no written materials. This is just a brief update. So since that May 14 study session, staff has created a dedicated webpage where, under the project section, where we've listed all the staff reports and presentations. The first one was from July of 2023, where we gave you the overview of the electrical system. And then we posted everything from the May 14 study session regarding the IMEA presentation and the staff historical context report. We'll continue to build out that portion of the website as we go forward. Also, since the council reviewed in May, there are now 20 IMEA members who have approved the power sales agreement with the agency. So IMEA will continue as an agency, regardless of who may not sign up. So they've hit their critical threshold. I think it was a somewhat lower number, but they're at least at 20 now.
So my, what's the total? Is it 35?
Thirty-two.
Thirty-two members?
Thirty-two members, right. Also, as we all know, and has certainly been advocated by Brian and other members of staff and members of our community to build out the renewable portfolio, they're, they were looking at 100-megawatt solar purchase power agreement, and that has now been increased to 150-megawatt. So there was an opportunity to increase that part of the portfolio, and I believe they'll be voting on that at their next meeting. So, so there was a lot of information that was presented back in May, and prior to scheduling this matter for more in-depth discussion, I wanted to ask the council what questions you may have at this time, and if there's additional information that we can provide, it gives us enough runway to start to put it together. I don't expect you to give it to me like on the spot tonight, but if you can get back to me maybe within the next seven to 10 days, because we are starting to, we're keeping an eye on the other member communities, and we're starting to, you know, frame, you know, how the next level review will go. But I'd really like your input, questions that you may have, additional information you may be looking for, so that we can start to do our homework and get it ready for you. I thought we did a really nice job in the May study session of giving you the context and how this worked, but we'd like to be able to hit a high bar next time, too. So, any questions you have tonight, I'm happy to take them otherwise, or requests for information. Otherwise, just get back to me in the next seven to 10 days individually, and I'll begin to put it together.
Yeah, you know, I, there's a couple residents that have reached out to me who are deep into this space, and their biggest issue is why the pressure to agree now to a contract in 2035. And especially since all, apparently, the folks who are in the know, you know, there's expected- And especially since all apparently the folks who are in the know, you know, there's expected to be a lot of interesting things come online through different, you know, technologies in the next five to 10 years. And so I think it would be, given that we are blessed of having a very educated, engaged community, I'd like to see, you know, that, I think there was a public hearing before the environmental, the forestry and environmental committee that was canceled at the last minute. They were going to talk about the IMEA.
They had a meeting, I think, just last night.
Oh, they did, okay.
Was it recently they had?
It wasn't the EFC, though.
It wasn't the EFC that was going to have.
It was somebody else, one of the committees, and it got canceled because.
It wasn't a committee.
So I, I know they had it on their agenda and we had a staff illness, so we weren't able to staff that meeting. But it has been rescheduled. I thought I saw the draft agenda, Kristin, it thought it was coming out here soon. So that is on their next agenda.
Oh, it is.
I thought.
Yeah, I think it, I think it's EFC, yeah. So.
Were you manning it then?
No.
No, but I, I do think, you know, I know there's a pressure to get this done fast, right? I know.
No.
But now that they, especially since they've hit the 20, you know, member threshold, I'd like to really understand, you know, some of the, some things that, I'm not an expert in this, but other people really studied it and said, look, you know, you can go more aggressive with the green energy. I think the, everybody, nobody's questioning, well, let's, let's put it this way. I think there's some education or engagement that we need to have with the community about some of the choices we have to make, you know, in terms of these decisions.
We should probably build a FAQ on the website so that we can start building a knowledge base that we can add to as questions come up.
But I think there's members of the community who would like to come and talk about it, whether it's before the EFC or before the village board. And I think one of the things that I consistently hear from, you know, people who are in the renewable energy space is, you know, this, could we wait a year to sign up?
So this was covered at the May 14 agenda.
Yeah, no, I know.
So it goes until next April?
Right.
For us to sign up.
So we have time.
So there's time.
Yeah.
And we weren't advocating for this to be done next month or anything like that.
Oh, God, no.
No.
And we can certainly add more context about the runway as to why the IMEA is requesting, you know, the next round of.
No, and they explained it, but I think people who are more educated than us can ask the tough questions.
Absolutely, yeah.
So I think, so in terms of next step, I will work on, you know, trying to get the folks who contacted me to, you know, give me some questions and things like that, you know, to help build out the website. But I'd like to see more discussion at the EFC, if that's the right place, not to put that on you, Bob. But, but, you know, I'd like to have kind of a robust discussion because I think there's a lot of people who are very concerned, you know. I, you know, whether it was fair or not, I mean, I think we all saw the Chicago Tribune article that, you know, I kept looking if it was on the opinion page, it was not.
Right.
You know, it didn't tell the whole story, we all know that. But I think it did set off a lot of concern in the community, whether people have showed up, you know, in public speaking, you know, early or not. So I don't know the best way forward, but I think what I've heard everybody say is take a pause, push back a little bit on IMEA, ask about whether you can't change some of their timelines on some of what their plans are with Prairie State, you know. But I'm not, I'm not an expert.
Yeah, I certainly don't want to go down those rabbit holes tonight.
Right, no, right.
But I, one thing I would, I mean, EFC was certainly going to report back on it. I'm sorry, it was going to be for tomorrow night. And I would say that a public hearing probably isn't the appropriate place for EFC, but we may want to consider, or I'd recommend you consider maybe having a joint meeting with EFC at some point, once we have information together.
Yes, I, I don't remember, I don't, Bob, maybe you can clue me in here. I don't remember sending this to EFC and asking for any sort of advisory action on it.
No, and that was what my suggestion was going to be. I think I ran into you at the, you know, farmer's market and I said, you know, maybe this would be a good thing to get some of the people, you know.
Oh, I agree that the conversation has to happen, but I don't remember council.
No.
Remanding this to EFC for action.
But the EFC has been, as you know, looking.
They've been tracking it, right.
Alternative energy sources, ways to look to the future. So I think maybe that has dovetailed into this a little bit. But, you know, Tina, to your point, if I, if I may, you know, I thought the Tribune article actually may have been, provided us a great service. Because some of what was in the Tribune article contradicted what we heard from IMEA. I mean, and so it raised issues. We probably all collectively had conversations. I had one with Rob and Brian, other people have had with Rob and Brian. And, and so you learn more and more, you pull the thread and you learn more and more. To your point, we have, and we've got letters in front of us, there are other residents that are, you know, very well-versed in this. I've heard no one say, don't double down on coal. I mean, I, so, you know, so draconian. I think there's an understanding that we are, you know, there are conflicting issues here, but we are doing something that is a 25, 30-year program. And there are a lot of smart people in this community, and to get the benefit of their input, I think, is, is really important. I thought the letters that we received were excellent, thoughtful.
Yeah.
And so, you know, I don't know what shape the, the public discourse should take here in terms of a public hearing or a symposium and bring everyone around, but I know people have, have thought about this. And, you know, so I will get back, I know what specific questions, but that's just a microcosm of the issues.
I think a joint meeting makes a lot of sense, don't you, Bob? That, you know, bring them in. We did that with Plan Commission once, right?
It's, it's happened on occasion where you have issues that align. With respect to the Tribune article, we did put a, what we thought was additional context on the website about that, you know, just to help to provide additional information. So again, it's, this update tonight was really a sense of just checking in, letting you know we're still working on it. We'd love your feedback. What are you looking for? What questions do you have? What more can we illuminate? And then I would assume this would come, we'd get this scheduled and then we can continue the conversation. It's not, I don't think there's any expectation that the next meeting, this is going to be decided. This is going to be a process that.
We are not rushing, right.
No, but I, I was thinking, this study session kind of format lends itself to having a study session discussion with members of the public who are very passionate and informed.
Mm-hmm.
Right?
I'm trying to get to, as, as I always will, whether it's the lakefront or this, one, one set of facts and context. So you just told me we're going from 100 to 150 megawatts of solar. I'm like, I don't know if the, should I be happy or like appalled? I don't know. So.
Yes.
So I'm just, both, okay. So I'm just trying to understand that and understand, and I'll have specific questions, but just the context of, of what, in the bigger scheme, what this means. And, and I've heard, oh, it's much, there's much more, it's cheaper to go green. I'm like, uh, that doesn't really, I just need to really, if we can get everyone to agree on the set of facts, cost, all those things, it'll make our job a lot easier.
Understood. So Phil, I'll be the endpoint and then I'll work with Brian and Nick to bring this along.
Sounds good. I know we had some people that wanted to speak on this, so I have some. Jude, did you want to speak on this?
I'm listening, I'm all right.
Terry?
Notice I always bring my own chair in because anyone with short legs cannot sit in these things if they key the van with their legs sticking straight out.
Anyone with a bad back can't sit in those things either, so.
I hate them. Yeah, I'm Terry Cross. I'm at 828 Bell and I've been here in One Etta for 35 years. I'm also in charge of communications and outreach for Go Green One Etta. So I'm one of those people that's passionate about this, almost more so than anybody. So I want, but I do want to thank the village council and everybody, Chris, you're about to leave, for your commitment to the community. This is, what you guys do is huge. I mean, when I'm home in my PJs on a cold, wintry night, you guys are here around the table. So thank you for what you're doing. And I want to thank you for the opportunity to speak on this topic. I watched last, the last study session and my immediate impression was that this is an extremely complicated issue, made more intractable by the fact that we're being asked to renew a contract 10 years early. I appreciated trustee Epitoff's concerns about the amount of power we will need to run new data centers in the wake of the AI revolution taking place and the increase in electrical power we'll need as everything gets electrified from our heat to our appliances and to our cars. I hope that the village council takes its time to get this right and that you get public input on the important issue. My point, my hope is that we can find a way forward in which our power supply meets the three-legged stool rule. Cost-effective, reliable, and sustainable, especially in the environmentally friendly sense of the word. Future generations depend on us doing the right thing. Thank you. Sorry.
Thank you, Terry. Ted, you want a bite?
Yeah, I'm thinking for a second on this as well. I didn't see there was a second signup sheet. So, you know, I'm not as gentle. So I'm disappointed. I'm glad that we're talking about it. I don't know, see how, I'm not sure what politicized means in this context, but it does seem odd to go all in on Prairie State 10 years early, if ever. You know, but this, but this village has lagged behind for decades, right? We've been talking about, like, trying to encourage home solar in this village and we still don't have net metering. I mean, when I first did it, we had no metering, right? We got, we subsidized the village for five years with our solar panels, didn't get a payback. And the problem is, is that there's this idea, somehow there's this idea that it's all about cost and we got to be cost-conscious. And yes, we have to be cost-conscious, but we have to account for the things that cost money. And here we are with the outer rainbands of the post-tropical cyclone barrel, July 9th? I don't remember many tropical cyclones hitting Illinois when I was a kid growing up, but here we are. I guess nothing's changed. And the problem is, is that things are changing and we are not accounting for all the costs that the things we do generate. And when we don't invest and don't subsidize things that can help for the future, we're not being cost-conscious. And it's disappointing that, as I've said, one of the richest communities in the country is not leading the way, but is lagging by 20 years, the state of Illinois.
Thank you, Ted. Anybody else like, come on up, King.
Thank you, King Poor, 735 Walden. And my, so my involvement with this, almost feels like a Dickens novel. I started in chapter two and now it's chapter 17. I was a, it wasn't even a trustee, I was, I remember sitting right here in February 2007. I had just been slated as a trustee and I came to learn about what, what you do. And there was a presentation that night about Prairie State. This was before, it was, it was just an idea. And it made sense at the time because these old coal plants were going offline, you had to get new capacity. And this was billed as the cleanest coal plant. And, and fracking was, wasn't, wasn't even a thing then. And so coal was really the way to go economically, renewables, that was still a long, long way in the future. So in 2007, this contract made some sense and I don't blame any of my colleagues that I joined a few months later in voting the way they did. And I probably would have voted the same way. But that was then and this is now, and a lot has changed in those 17 years. And I've, I've paid attention to this over the years, off and on, and what, and I also had experience as, as a young lawyer with the ComEd nuclear power plant construction. So I've been involved in this world professionally as well. And, and reading the Tribune article, what, what struck me, and I, and I know that it could be, you know, argued whether it was an opinion piece or not, but that there's enough complexity in this and enough moving parts that this is probably one of the most consequential decisions this village will make when it comes to our energy future. And while IMEA has had their, their chance to present, I have found, as a trustee, that good decisions often come from getting what I would call tension, if you want to call that, but it's the competition of ideas. You know, this is what we do in the adversary system. It's the competition of ideas. And so in talking to some of my, my friends in the village, I was also one of the founders around the same time of the EFC, along with Ken Bayless. So I've been involved with village environmental issues for a long time. And I learned a lot from the Tribune article and learned more from talking to others. I've been able to reach out to Rob and to Bob to talk about my thoughts. And I'm not here tonight to talk about a, this position on this, but more a process. And I, I think there's been talk already about the, the importance of education. And when I think about this issue, I think we could all agree that the vast majority of One Etta's, I'll even put a number, 95%, probably have no idea how reliant we are on coal. That if you asked, if you told somebody who's plugging in their EV at one of our charging stations and told them how much of that electricity is coming from coal, that would be a big, big surprise, I believe, for the vast majority of people in the village. I also believe that the vast majority of people would be very surprised to know that our, our energy agency is asking us to do what they're asking us to do, and that is sign up for another 20 years after 2035, 10 years early. And there, there may be completely justifiable reasons for that, and I, and I understand that. But something of this magnitude, I really think deserves a real in-depth discussion with the community so that whatever you do, whether you sign up with IMEA with the contract as it's proposed or as it's been renegotiated, whatever you do, that the people in the village cannot say, this was something I never heard about, or this is a surprise, or anything like that. I think you want the confidence to say, we did our best to educate this village. And so that however it turns out, everyone can feel like we did, we did our best to let people know the consequences and the options. So my thought, and this is the thought that I've, I've had with, discussion I've had with others, is one way to do this would be something along the lines of a community forum. And what this would look like, I mean, it could take a lot of different shapes, but you could do it in conjunction with the League of Women Voters, you could do it with the EFC, you could do it with any number of organizations and invite different speakers. IMEA, of course, but maybe some of these other voices that you read about in the Tribune, maybe they should also have a, a voice. And so you have this, this back and forth on what may be the, the best solution. And it may be an opportunity also to ask good questions of IMEA about what, is this really necessary? What more could you do? I mean, the, I don't know enough about the details of all of it, but I think it would be a way to give the village a balanced view of this and really feel like everybody's had a chance to become educated and have their say, however it turns out. So I would hope you would consider a community forum. I've been talking to people about sometime maybe in September or October. I think it's probably doable. And it would, it would involve a variety of experts at the table and let the, let the experts shape, shape the discussion and open it up to village residents for questions. I think it would be a way to get this balanced and a really thoughtful way to approach all this because it, it really is one of the biggest, most important issues this council's going to make and it really affects, you know, generations going forward. So again, not to take a position, but just a, a request to consider a community forum sometime this fall. Thank you.
Thanks, King. I think we do have a good track record on, on diligence and, and study. I mean, if you look at the lake, at the, at the lakefront, we spent a year and many, many sessions talking about it at this table. And, you know, I envision that we probably end up going through a process similar to that. The idea of a, of a, you know, kind of a community gathering with, with expert speakers is an interesting idea. I don't think this would be the venue for it here at Village Hall, obviously. I think we'd need something larger and a little bit more accessible, but certainly, you know, I hope the public hears us on this. We are not rushing, and we are gonna take the time necessary to make the right decisions. There's no rush here. The Village of Winnetkin is not in love with coal, but we are in love with being prudent stewards of our tax dollars and our, our other dollars, our revenues from this thing, and we have to be smart about that, too. I take a lot of solace in the fact that technologies are changing, that coal cannot go on forever because the technologies are becoming so much more attractive, not only from an environmental standpoint, but from a cost standpoint. And as they continue to be deployed and, and added to, you know, by the time we hit 2035, there'll probably be a whole nother set of, of options to us that we didn't even, or options available to the consortium that we didn't even realize would be here before. So, interesting discussion. I'm looking forward to having it. And October probably is a good time for us to have another session on it. So, if I'm here. If I'm not here, then Bob, you can do it. Okay, anybody else? Okay, we'll close that one down, and then we'll move forward on our last item for discussion, which is the village council terms of office discussion. Tonight, council review and discuss terms of office for elected officials. Additionally, the Northwest Municipal Conference surveyed members of the communities regarding terms of office for trustees and village president. I'm gonna give you a lead into this one, too, because people are probably thinking, "What the hell is Chris doing?" I'm gonna tell ya. Okay, first of all, when I, when I first came on council, the one thing that I recognized from my first round of service was that four years is not enough to really get anything generationally important done. That you need the consistency at council, and you need the consistency at this seat to guide these projects through. You think about stormwater, we're on year, we went west in 2016, right?
15, 16.
15, yeah, it was, it was, it was late 15. Look, it's nine years this project's been going on, and we've been shepherding it along. Streetscape took us 10 years before we got the first, the first shovel in the ground on that. When you have a revolving door of trustees and village presidents, you can't do these important, long-term projects, because you can't afford to take a year and talk about the Lakefront. Because, and King, you and I were on a, on a council, you weren't there the last year that Ed was, was running the show, but, or were you? You went off with that, that's right. When we had like 40 meetings in 50 days, it was some insane amount of thing, because Woodbury wanted to get everything done before he walked out the door, right? And we, we ground it out. So, we're in a different place now, we're not gonna rush like that, so. But it did make me think about the fact that, geez, here's Ed, you know, beating his brains out, trying to get stuff over the finish line that he's been working on for the last three and a half years. Change doesn't happen easy, and it is even more difficult here in Winnetkin. I worked with the caucus on what they commonly referred to as Rules-a-Palooza, which extended the slating from two terms to four terms. That's what gave Bob and I, and I think neither of you have gone into third term yet, right? So, third term, well, there you go. Rob wouldn't be sitting here, Bob wouldn't be sitting here, and I wouldn't be sitting here. Maybe that's a good thing, I don't know. But, but the point is, is that this constant turnover has a lot of impacts, not only on the policymaking that, that happens up here at village council, but then you have another component with staff, having to bring people up to speed on a myriad of issues that are, that are in process, and also just on being a trustee or a village president. And there's a lot to that. Most other communities, most, I'm not saying all, but many other communities do have four-year terms, and all the other taxing bodies in our community have four-year terms, two-four-year terms. D-36, Nutria, Park District, Library, so we're kind of the outlier on that. My posit has always been, it takes two years to learn the job as a trustee. Maybe I was just really dim about it, but I couldn't even figure out how to get anything done till my third year. And then I had a year to actually try to get something done and be a champion of something, and then I was off council. And King, you probably experienced the same thing, that there was a lot of stuff left on the list when you walked out the door. So, it's impossible to get generational projects. And the other thing that, that I noticed, as I was an observer of village council after I left the first time, is you keep, you're forced to rehash over and over and over again, because you're always getting somebody up to speed. So, you gotta fall back, get everybody back up to speed, hopefully you got the, hopefully, you know, everything looks pretty much the same as when the new people walked in, and then you move forward. But the rehashing of conversations is something that, that is a hallmark of village councils that, that I've seen over the past 20 years. Less stability in project, policy, we already talked about that. And the, another thing is, is it's difficult in finding a stable of new potential candidates. I mean, the caucus has to go out and, and beat the bushes just to find people to create the competition that they're looking for in the interview process, and they always haven't done a good job. And I've visited the caucus on seven occasions, and I've seen it play out. You know, I've, I've been a consumer of this. They don't always do, they're volunteers, too. They don't always do the things necessary to pick best trustees, my opinion. This isn't a village opinion, it's a Chris Rins opinion. Except for the last year and a half, I've, I've never seen a caucus selection committee person sitting in this room. Jude, are you tonight?
I've served two, I've, I've served two terms as on the village candidate selection committee.
When?
You're saying you've never seen anyone who's ever served?
Oh, no, what I'm saying is that there hasn't been a regular flow of people who have served.
Well, that's, that's the advantage of our recorded meetings now.
No. Well, I guess so, but, you know, sometimes there's a lot more to it than watching it on TV, at least, I believe.
Of course.
Anyway, and the one thing that I've been completely frustrated with is that the caucus seems to have an inability to grasp the learning curve required to do this. And my examples are Coladarchi, Swerke, Bob, and Kim. They have no concept of what this job entails from that side of the dais. They just don't, and nobody's gonna convince me any different of it. So, I am prejudiced in that respect. So, I, it seems to me that, that it makes sense that we shift this to two-four-year terms. I think it's better for the village, I think it's better for policymaking, I think it's better for decision-making, and I think these, these ridiculously short-term limits are impeding our ability to do important work at this village council. I don't have a dog in this fight. I'm not, I'm not serving any elected position ever again in my life. I prom, I promise everybody in this room, you're done with me. But I do know what's right for this council, and I do, I believe I know what's right for this village. And to me, four-year terms make a whole lot of sense on a lot of dimensions, and I think, I think this, I, I used to get cute answers when I first came on with you, King, because I asked some of the elders at that time. And the idea, and there was always this, "Oh, well, that, in two years, if you don't like 'em, you can throw the bums out." And that's great cocktail party talk, but when you're trying to execute policy for a municipality and deal with taxpayer dollars year in, year out, I think you need a little bit more than just a cute phrase for short terms. So, the way this works, and I'll turn it over to Rob and Peter at this point, is we don't have to make a decision on whether we should do it or not until it goes to referendum. So, at this point, the, the real question to you all is, is this a question that you would like to put to the community on referendum? And then, once the community speaks on it, then we can take action if, if it's ratified through the referendum as a positive. So, we aren't deciding what to do, how to do it, the nuances, there's none of this deep intellectual thought, it's just, "Do you want to hear what the community has to say on this, or are you okay?" Last thing on this is, the word I got from folks at the caucus is that the rules committee has already entertained discussions about reverting to two, two-year terms for village council. So, that's cooking over at the caucus right now.
Just a point of clarification, we cannot, I just want to make sure people are clear if they're watching, that we can't make the change independent of a referendum.
No, we cannot.
It has to go to a referendum.
But Rob's talking.
Well, I, yeah.
He's got all the stuff.
Okay. I just want to make sure people understand that the referendum is not just punting it, it's that it's a requirement, but go ahead, Rob.
Okay, now you can do it.
You covered a lot of ground.
Oh, sorry.
So, so I'm gonna be really brief with respect to the survey, and then turn it over to Peter to address his memo. So, the Northwest Municipal Conference will survey its members occasion. They did this back in 2017, they just did it again recently, and as you can tell, 26 of the 28 communities have four-year terms. Winnetkin and Lake Forest are the only two communities with two-year terms. And then you saw there's a, a section of the memo that talks about term limits and how that actually is, whether it's historical practice or whether it's in the village code. One neighbor that's very close to us, Will Mett, having worked there before, that is embedded in their village code, and they've abided for that since, you know, for decades. So, the survey data's there for you, I'm not gonna regurgitate it any more than that, but happy to take questions on the data. If not, we can turn it over to Peter and let him handle his memo.
So, as Rob said, as you all know, it's in our code, the village code, that the trustees and the village president, our elected officials, have two-year terms. The village president and three trustees are elected in odd-numbered years during the consolidated election. The other three trustees are elected in even-numbered years during the general primary election. It is correct that, under the Illinois Constitution, in order to change term limits, that's a change in governance, it's, that's the magic words, and that does require a referendum. There are two types of referendum. There's an advisory referendum, and there's a binding referendum. The village could choose, and referendum can be initiated by the village board by the adoption of an ordinance or resolution. The, the village council could decide to do a non-binding referendum, which would have no legal effect. It would basically be, you know, it's referred to as a beauty contest, it, it's not legally binding. We would have to make that language in the question for the referendum clear, that this is just a public opinion poll, not intended to have any legal effect. If that was the route, then that, so whatever happens to that referendum, then if the village council decided to go forward and do the change, another referendum would have to be placed on the ballot that would be binding, because we can't do it without a binding. The other alternative, if there's a desire to do anything, is a binding referendum. A binding referendum is self-executing. So, if a binding referendum passes, the village, the, the, the term limits, the new terms of office would go into effect, and the village council would be under, would have to comply with that and amend our code to be consistent with those referendum results. The, the require, the timing requirement is 79 days before the election, the council would have to adopt an, the required ordinance or resolution for a binding or a non-binding, those, that, that, that timing is the same. So, you know, if we, if there was a desire to move forward in the near future for the November 5th general election coming up, the deadline for the ordinance or resolution would be August 16th. It's actually August 18th, but that's a Sunday, so just to be safe, we would say do it August 16th. If there was a desire to have the referendum at the, the, the 2025 primary election, the deadline would be January 10th, 2025. And as Rob indicated, there's no, as you all know, there's no term limits, per se, in our code. So, any caucus term limit or understanding that the caucus has or the caucus rules have, do not, they're not binding on the village, on the village council.
So, one interesting thing is that part of what I, what occurred to me as I was thinking about this is that if we could get it on the November ballot, we would get a really good sampling of the entire community, because obviously the general elections draw a lot more people to the polling places than our little March elections that we usually have. Sounds like we have to rush, though, which I'm not a big fan of, but we would get a good sampling size and a really, I think, a solid opinion from the community if we could get it, if we could get it on November, if you want to do that. So, at this point, you guys just decide what we're gonna do.
Okay, well, I have a few thoughts.
Sure.
And of course, I have to say, I can speak to this from a few points of view. Obviously, you called me out as one who has gone through the foibles and whatever of the caucus process to be sitting here where I am today. You know, as I mentioned, I've also served on the caucus council as chair and on the candidates committee twice, so I, and know those rules inside and out, so I'm pretty familiar with that process, and of course, sitting here today. I've thought about this a lot since we, I saw this was on the agenda, and I, I have several thoughts, some concerns. You know, first, I do want to ask, what problem are we really solving? Do we really feel that, I'll just use 20 years as a frame of reference, over the last 20 years, the village council hasn't been able to get things done because of a lack of continuity in the, in the composition of the council?
Yes.
I don't, I don't know if stormwater really took nine years because we had turnover.
I do.
Okay, so, I'm throwing that out there, I don't know if everyone would think that. I mean, do we, you know, when we look, I wanted to look back to see what the composition's been for the last 20 years. How many trustees do we have that have served multiple terms? We've had some that just served two, served one term for two years, and decide that's for many reasons, that, that's not for them. We've had trustees leave in the middle of a term. Now, the downside of, the upside-downside of that is, when someone does leave in the middle of a term, I mean, the, it is appointed, the position is appointed by a president, it's not, it's not a person that was elected. Now, we go to four years. All of our boards and all of these, the people on all the committees certainly are all working very hard, but I think we have to be honest that we have three meetings a month, many others have one or two. We also have additional responsibilities, being liaisons on other committees, we have farmers market, we appear at other events. This is a big job. I know you talked about that at the caucus council meeting. It's a big job. Many people can look out two years and say, "Okay, I can, between my job and family, I can figure out and make sure I can commit to two years." Looking out four years is a little more difficult to make that kind of commitment. We're already, I know the caucus council already struggles to find people who are willing to make the commitment even for two years. If we make it a four-year commitment, we're probably shrinking the pool of really good candidates. We also then increase the likelihood that people, if they do agree to serve, might have something come up, that they can't fulfill their terms. Now, again, we're moving into appointment, and before you know it, over a period, half the council could be appointed, not elected, undermining the entire, undermining the entire process. That would not be necessarily the way it's supposed to work. And last, I guess I have to say, maybe it's last, I've got a few other points here now, but the entire environment today, I think in the country, is concerned about long-term, people serving long, long terms in governmental roles, and there's a push for term limits. So, by us going out and asking not to limit our, limit terms, but actually increase the amount of times people can serve is probably contrary to public sentiment, no matter what one's political leaning is. I think people have been, been concerned about the amount of time someone can actually spend in the role, and a long-term influence that could be open to abuse. We're all doing a good job, but certainly it, it could be. So, I have to say, I don't have a big appetite to changing this, to changing to four-year terms. I think that, that we would be shooting ourselves in the foot as a, as a village at this time. I agree, the caucus process is, is not perfect, and the, that's, that's, where I have I agree, the caucus process is, is not perfect and the, that's, that's, where I have, as you called me out on the one, that was the caucus process. That wasn't necessarily a function of the term length, how long the term was or whatever. So that's the process perhaps that needs looking at, not necessarily lengthening our terms to four term, four years.
Others? Go ahead.
Well, I just, you know, if, if anybody would have, would have benefited from a four-year term, it would have been you, Kim, and you, Bob, right? You know, and I think you've spoken very eloquently on it. I did a little, you know, I didn't, I don't really, I came into this fairly agnostic, right? I don't, I don't feel like we, in the time, so I guess I'm, I've been elected twice and I was appointed, so I guess I'm in my third term. I don't feel, whether it was in my position as the chair of the plan commission for like eight years or this, I didn't ever feel that village council was hindered, but I do appreciate that every time a new trustee comes onboard, there's a lot of staff time to orient the trustee, right? To, yeah. Well, I don't, I mean, I don't, I mean, especially with water and electric and some of the more complex things, no question, it is burdensome on staff and, you know, they do a fantastic job. And, you know, I think we're, we are who we are as a body largely because we have such excellent staff members. Okay, putting that aside, I did a little bit of a straw poll with some of my friends who have served, and particularly women, and I am very worried, to your point, Kim, that it could have, a four-year term could have a chilling effect on women willing to step up, who have family commitments, who don't even know, you know, they're, they're having a hard time getting over September, December, May, you know, craziness in their families. I would be concerned about, you know, finding candidates and a breadth of candidates, right? We don't want just everybody who's retired. You know, I think what's really great about our board is we've got, you know, all different generations here, that it could have a chilling effect. So those were just some of the things I thought about without having really any, you know, inter, I mean, like, I don't feel strongly either way.
So the two-year term is, is the bait.
Yeah, it gets you hooked, and then you're all of a sudden, you're...
Right, that's the point. You get hooked and then you're like, okay.
And you're stuck there for eight years anyway.
So you end up serving four years.
I'm not sure, I'm not sure hooked is the word.
Yeah, I know. Trapped, trapped. No, but I, I mean, just to wrap it up, I totally understand the concern. The good news is, I feel like a lot of the generational projects, knock on wood, have happened, right? I mean, we're well on our way to the second phase of Stormwater. We are already undertaking the monumental 100-year water main replacement. Those are really large projects, streetscape. I don't, you know, who knows what is, you know, going to come at us next, but I do think that a lot of those heavy lifting projects are somewhat past us, but I didn't feel like we were disrupted from my pers, so, anyway, I, I'm glad we're having the discussion. I am worried about the chilling effect of finding people willing to commit in today's world, not 20 years ago, but in today's world, to commit for four years.
It's funny you said that, because if I, I don't know if I'd be here if there was a original four-year term, because I couldn't commit. I know you were talking, we talked about it last time, do we up again? And I, as I do, I write down, you know, my pro and con list, and I get from the staff side, I, the pros for a two-year, for two, four-year term is less process and elections to deal with for the trustees, less transitions for staff to navigate. And that's significant. I mean, I know the time you guys put in, I can't imagine the police chief asking, you know, having to bring somebody new up to speed every time. Allows potentially for, as Chris said, for more knowledge and continuity if council is working correctly. And I think while we have some of our disagreements, this is a pretty high-functioning council of getting, you know, we've gotten a lot of pretty heavy lifting done and, and, but it's working correctly. Conversely, we've been in the past when we've had people and presidents that weren't working as well, and that scares the heck out of me if those people are in for eight years. That's a real concern to me. And so it's like, in the best case, yeah, makes, makes pretty good sense. In the worst case, it's not great. On the cons, I, right, the first one is what Tina and Kim just said. One or two four-year terms may limit the type and quality of village trustees willing to take on that longer commitment. And I just don't know what, you know, with what I was doing, if I would have, two years, I said, okay, I know I can get through in two more years, I know I can commit again. I probably wouldn't have done a second term if it was four years. And I'm not sure, you guys have to speak for yourselves. Which is tough, but it's, as long as we're being honest here, let's, let's get it out. We've lost multiple trustees, as you've talked about, some work changes, life changes, family changes, and they realize they just can't suck it up and they have to get off. And getting off in the first year means we've got to find somebody else to step up for three more years. And then you could, it could, if you have the wrong person in there, you can skew the trustees. If you have a president there for four years and somebody quits in the first, two people quit in the first year, you're, you're potentially, hopefully it shouldn't be, but you hope you don't get there, but you may. Yeah, I guess, I, I just look at, you know, the pool, and I, I think that if you want a diverse group of candidates up here that are really, can really power through in two-year segments, if the, if the caucus is working correctly, and what happened to Bob doesn't happen, what, Kim doesn't, I mean, hard-working trustees that really do their homework, you will lose some of, I'm worried if it doesn't, they don't get more refined on this, I'm worried that you're going to lose some of the good candidates that aren't going to see what's happened and aren't going to want to go through it. And that's what really concerns me more than even the four-year term.
I think there's kind of a drift going one way here, but that's, that's fine.
With me and less work.
That's fine, that's fine. You know, obviously, for some of us who've gone through some, what I would consider, you know, unforced consternation in the, in the village, you know, it doesn't always go smoothly. That's fair enough. You know, one thing that I have enjoyed about being on council is where we've had fresh, new people come in. You know, there is some natural sort of rhythm to the council changing. I mean, you know, when I started, you know, I had, I worked with people that had been on there, there was still two, two terms, but they were going off, you know, Scott Myers was one of them, and so it was great, you know, and then since I've been on, I've really enjoyed having new people come on, Kirk and Bridgette most recently, Tina not too long ago. I mean, you know, so, you know, and to Rob's point, you know, I think at least my experience just, and Chris, part of it's your leadership, but, you know, this has been a well-functioning group for the seven years that I've been involved. So I don't, I don't get a sense of the hindrance. I, I don't like some of the conflict that has occurred over that seven years. I've been, that's been disappointing to see, but, and I don't think it's necessary. And we just really want to have this flow of generations coming on, new people being interested, and if they're just on for two years, peace, you know, but there is something about, you get into it, then you get, you know, invigorated by it, and you just sort of, you're doing a good job and you're coming prepared and so on, there should be some deference to that, I think, and you can continue on. I think it would be really disappointing if they go back to two terms, two years.
Yeah.
I think that would be...
That would kill this village council.
Yeah, I, I think it would really be...
Bracket.
Very difficult.
Yeah.
And so if you get good people and they want to serve two years or four years or six years or eight years, and they get the nod by the caucus and so on, you know, that's, that's a good scenario to have happen.
And if they're good, you hope they do.
You hope they do.
Because it does provide, I, I'm not minimizing the continuity and how important that is, but I, I hopefully, you know, you're, if it's functioning well, they will stay on and you have, I mean, most of us...
It's easier to say, oh, sure, I could do another two. I just really...
Two bite-sized pieces.
Right.
They're like those two-bite brownies, you know? They're so tempting.
I thought there were one.
But again, I think the reality is most trustees have served more than two years. The, the two-year and off is the minority of what has happened, so.
I have a question for Peter, Rob. Does the role and the duties of this council generally correlate to the role and duties of other councils, or is it a prescribed, like, here's what the council does versus staff versus, or is that, is there a variability in terms of what is expected of council from municipality to municipality?
I mean, it depends. So we're a village manager form of government, so the council is the legislative body, the policymaking body. It does not run the day-to-day functioning of the village. The village manager does that. There are some municipalities that are not village manager form of government. They create their roles and duties by ordinance, so it can be all over the board. I would say generally, and then there's the extreme where you have a commission form of government where each of you would be a department director.
Crazy.
Literally. That form of government is very, very, very rare right now in Illinois. Generally, the corporate authorities are legislative policymakers and the, the staff and the administrator or the manager runs the municipality day-to-day with variations.
So I would add that, obviously, I've only worked in council manager form of governments. That's, that's my chosen career path, so it is very similar in Winnetka to other communities. I've worked in Womet, I've worked in Clarendon and in Woodridge, and the way we function is very similar to all of our neighbors. The one thing I would say is that Winnetka has a long and complicated history and the, because we have, we're heavy on utilities, more so than other communities, so our zoning isn't necessarily always the easiest. So it is, I would say, the level of complexity here is greater than anywhere that I have seen, and I think it's greater than some of our neighbors, such as a Glencoe, a Northfield, or a Kennelworth. Now, I think even though we're population-wise smaller than Womet, our level of complexity is equal or greater.
Yeah.
If that makes sense. If you look at our budget scope, we're very similar, that's utility-driven. So the boards and commissions create quite a bit of extra work, right? So whenever you add boards and commissions, you add a level of staff support to keep them going, and then if you assign trustees to also help with that, to help communication and add, add context from council, that's an extra commitment that is probably a little heavier here than I've seen in other places.
Yeah, I mean, you just look at the meetings, six regular, 12 plan commission meetings, six farmers markets, and all the other stuff. It's, it's a lift that is, is heavier and...
Parade, I mean, we just, oh, the...
Which is good, I mean, but, but that's why...
Yeah, that's why we do it.
I would add that we're, staff's not advocating one way or the other on this, I just wanted to be clear. I would say though, that, and Kim, you've mentioned this before, that, you know, getting a new trustee in, it takes some time to get people up to speed. If you're very, very busy with hot issues like we have been, we may not be able to spend as much time with newer trustees as we may have done in the past. Kirk, my apologies if you didn't get enough time. But I, I would say that the, when you look at our staff reports, sometimes you'll see the history is expansive, and that's because the, the institutional memory isn't very long. So we'll have to make sure, we track that to make sure that newer board members have some sense of the context of the history, so.
Well, and, and...
It's manageable, but the one thing I would say that we do that others don't is that we have an election, two-year terms creates an election every year. So we're going through the election process every year in the clerk's office, and, you know, that's, you know, it's just part of it. Some of my colleagues are like, you know, how do you function when you have an election every year? And I go, it's just how we roll. It's manageable, but, you know, it's, it's a different scope of work.
Well, I, maybe there's a way to accomplish both, Chris, what you're talking about. No, as far as continuity, I mean, I think, I kind of laugh, can you imagine Congress or the Senate having an election, I mean, sitting around saying, you know, let's keep our term limits low? They would like, they want 20-year terms. And I think it speaks a lot to the, the type of people that are on this council, but I do think there's some continuity, especially in the head chair, that is, to, you know, so things like, you know, hopefully we'll get this, the post office site nailed down before, but some of you can appreciate that transition, and that's, I don't know how you do that, but it's, it's something to be thinking about. You know, I look at it maybe from a different lens, because I've been here twice, but, you know, the one thing that I do know is, is Stormwater might have stumbled its way across the finish line, but it was only through the continuity and the ability of the village president to establish relationships, important political relationships, that allow us to open up funding pots. And, you know, if somebody's here for four years, right, and only four years, there is no way that you can get up to speed on being village council president, deal with all the things we have going here in town, and then go out and start reaching out to, you know, our legislators, either at the state or the federal level. I mean, it's taken me seven years. I mean, I, I had breakfast with Congressman Schneider last week, at my request. That's something that if I had been a third-year president, and this is the first he heard of me, that never would have happened. And I'm talking to him about important funding for projects that we have in the pipeline. And getting the meeting is one thing, but actually having an attentive and listening party who knows you and is comfortable going to bat for you is a whole nother thing. And, you know, I guess Jude, maybe the message is to the caucus that if you start screwing with the, with the four-year, with the four, with the four terms, there's going to be some serious issues that are going to negatively impact the entire community.
So can I, can I address?
Sure.
Sorry, I just flew in from Columbus, Ohio, I've been gone for 10 days. I'm Jude, Ophelia, 112 Fuller Lane, and I was the chair of the Rules Committee when the caucus made this change. So I just want to make sure that everybody here stands, which is the tail and which is the dog, and we have who's wagging whom. At the time, and I'm glad somebody brought up Scott Myers, because I would think it was you and Scott Myers were terming out, and we all, and the term, throw the bums out, was used more than once in an, in executive committee meeting. We were limited to two two-year terms, which is a total of four years. And if you go back far enough, and I've only lived here for a mere 32 years, that village trustees were going to be at, on a, other body, schools, parks, whatever, and then when they'd grown up in that, that sort of cauldron, could come and be trustees, and they would only, dear God, only give me no more than two, two-year terms. But it got complicated and we needed to extend it. So what the caucus did is that you could only slate them for two, 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 two-year terms or a total of four years, and we made it so that we could slate candidates for a third and a fourth term for six and eight years, so that we could have that continuity. So there is nothing that, at the time, stopped us as a village from having anybody go and do those and come on. It's not that hard to fill in those petitions. I've done it. You know, you just circulate them at the village town hall, that anybody else could get on the ballot by circulating their own petition. So the caucus, and I'm not on it this year, but the caucus wanted to extend it so that we wouldn't lose several named top minds that were supporting this village and keeping things going. So, you know, and I, from Kim's point of view, I get it. You know, I had a spouse that was on for eight years on a, a council, and, you know, through, you know, he was done. Eight years is a long time, and for younger people, I can imagine that, you know, you don't want to do eight years on the school board and then another eight years on the village, as, in the village council. So minus is that keep it flexible, and I have no other opinion, but that was the whole caucus thing, is merely the slating, it has nothing to do with requirement, so.
Of course, the point can always be made that, and speaking as a voice of experience, running as an independent with the caucus in town, who is supposedly not a political party until it comes time to campaigning, and then all of a sudden, something changes. So, and they become political, and the yard signs show up, and we have a regular old election, so. Well, it doesn't sound like I've got a, I mean, Kirk, did you have any more comments? I'm sorry, you, you kind of got lost in the devil here.
That's okay. I'll reiterate maybe what I'm hearing, and if I'm going to keep it super simple, the projects or the initiatives that we're taking up are larger, longer-term, heavier lifts and as a primary argument for extending the, the term. Is that correct?
No.
No.
No, that is just one supporting argument, I guess you could say. Truthfully, it's, it's the turnover, it's the lack of institutional memory, it's the inability to move larger projects along, and that is, that is an important thing. I mean, think about Green Bay Road. We've got to do an intergovernmental agreement, we're going to probably need to go out and find some financing for it, we're going to need to program it, you need to design it. I mean, that's going to be six years. I'm sorry Hubbard Woods, folks, but it'll be six years before we put a bow on it, and that's just the reality of it. Now, if another village president...
we put a bow on it. And that's just the reality of it. Now, if another village president comes in after four years and decides he doesn't like streetscape, it stops. So these are the sort of things that, you know, you've gotta build the political will to do it. Then you've gotta, you know, get your council onboard, right, and, and get them to go along with you. Then you gotta find the money or get it budgeted, and then you can finally go ahead and do something. These all take a lot of time, and government is, is not efficient on a good day.
So to that point, that's like-
The functional part is-
The assumption that we would always find a president who's willing to serve for eight years.
Well, no, and it isn't. Because remember, anybody here, and, and Kim, you brought it up, I've had trustees leave after a year, three years. I mean, that's not uncommon. I mean, we've seen it, and I've seen it multiple times over the years, and there's a lot of examples of it. But people can excuse themselves whenever they want to. There's no, yeah, you made a commitment for four years.
See, my point was, it's more likely someone would-
Oh, no.
Be in a position that they'd have to step away with a four-year term than with a two-year term.
Yeah, I agree.
See, I never even, I hate to admit it, I never even gave the time commitment a thought. I just heard people asking me to help out, and I agreed to do it. So, but I'm-
But you run your own business.
Yeah.
Right? You know, if you're, if you're a W-2 employee, it may be different. You don't know if you're gonna be assigned to a big project, or your husband's gonna be, you know, taking on a project and have to travel. Right? I mean, those are the commitments you think about.
Yep. Well-
But I-
Here's the bottom line. I would've felt really guilty, and I would've had a, a bad feeling in my conscience if I didn't bring this up, because I feel that strongly that it was a good idea.
Yeah.
I can see we don't have the stomach for it. It's just like Tiff, you know, it's, Chris had a good idea, at least he thought so, but nobody else did. Okay, I can live with that, and we can move on.
I have an appetite for Tiff.
Oh, I hope the caucus council watches our, our session here to hear some real-life examples of the pros.
Can I, just a couple thoughts. My question about, like, is what this council does, is it representative of other councils? And I brought up some points, and it's been brought up in the past about our meeting schedule. Thinking through holistically, like, really taking a step back and looking at, you know, not just whatever our term limits or the amount of time we serve, in terms of the collaboration with the caucus, in terms of what, what are the desires of the community? What are, what are the desires of staff to be able to run an efficient government? You know, day-to-day staffing, our meeting schedule, are the, the actions we're taking? I mean, ultimately, we're, I mean, I'm just 14 months into this, incredibly impressed at the level of detail and care that staff and council and all the supporting team members have put into everything we do. I mean, it's just super impressive. I mean, I feel like I'm still an outsider, you know, that was let in behind, to see behind the curtain. It's just really impressive. So I commend everybody that's involved, but-
It's to my point.
Not just to council, but just to support the entire process. Is there, holistically, is there a better way that we can do things? I mean, I think the end result, we're doing things right. But, Rob, I think you sort of touched on it a little bit. Like, you know, we are, you know, everyone's, whatever, grinding the levers or whatever it is, you know, keeping the machine well-oiled. But maybe there's little things that we can do holistically that can improve the desirability of people to wanna serve, to make things more efficient for staff to be able to prepare, to keep continuity and longevity on these larger initiatives, so we don't lose that mindshare, that, you know, intellectual capital. And I don't know what those things are, but maybe that's just a discussion point. And it doesn't have to be a formal survey at this point, to, you know, other municipalities or engaging, you know, big study. But maybe it's just a, a discussion that we can start with the end goal, you know, the thought pattern of why this topic came up in the first place. But maybe there's other little things that can be done over time that can improve the process for everyone.
I think it makes sense. I think that's a good point. I mean, Rob, you did it, you just did it with signing authority. And we are bringing every nickel and dime that we were signing 20 years ago at the same limits. And so I think those, to your point, that should make your life easier and your staff's life. So you're not copying and pasting everything, every, every gumball you buy.
Or, I'll just bring, Design Review Board, with David's involvement, did finally come up with some revised guidelines on audience and signage that would-
Yeah.
Help streamline and simplify the process, both for the, you know, the, the community members that are a part of that board, and also for staff. So, I mean, there might be little things that we can all talk about over time.
Well, one of the things I was just thinking about, and I'm sure there's more efficiencies or to help reduce the strain on staff of, you know, people coming on and off, just having the projects page tab on the website is huge, you know. As soon as, you know, I think as, I think it was up and running on Stormwater, and as soon as I was appointed, I, you know, I spent a good day or so going through all the Stormwater documents and agreements. And that helped, right? I don't think I was perfect, and I don't think I came with all the information. But to the, your point, there's things like that that can help institutionalize the memory better. And of course, our staff and our village attorney are institutional knowledge too, right?
Part of it, yeah.
Right. I mean, with our form of government, right, we're not expected to be experts on everything.
And certainly it does help if, I have to say, if trustees had served on one of our other boards. That's just about the process of meetings and the public that, when you bring here, that does help versus coming in cold.
Talk to the caucus.
I know. That's, that, our purview is-
Well, I'm batting three out of four tonight, so I feel pretty good. You know, that's my job. And, and I really would've felt as though, I believe that the two, that the four-year terms just smoothed out a lot of things. But that's the perspective of somebody who served for 13 years. So, I mean, maybe you guys look around with that thinking. But since you're not there tonight, I'm not gonna force the issue. I've, I've got dogs to walk.
I wanted to say something. I've been sitting here this whole time.
Oh, come on up, Ted. Let's hear what you got to say.
I wanted to say that I was intrigued by the, I don't know, by his state this whole time. I was really going to sleep. So, hi. So, actually, I was intrigued, especially since I saw the Niles reference in the packet, you know, with Mayor Blaze after 47 years.
For Shafter.
What's that?
For Shafter.
Oh, yeah. Finally resigned in 2008, and he's indicted for corruption. So Niles, you know, of course, adopted a two, you know, eight-year term limit. You know, it's an interesting discussion. And I, I, you know, I don't know, I, I don't wanna say bad things about the caucus. I don't wanna say good things about the caucus. I've been on the caucus, so, all that kinda stuff. But I don't know, I don't know what the right answer is. I do think you're right. I think that two years is too short a time. But I think that they're right, because I think a four-year term is hard to get people to agree. And also, I, I'm concerned about the idea of, like, having three people appointed, you know, and if someone's there for four years and they're a complete idiot, then how do you get rid of them? And, you know, an impeachment, I mean, might be something. But I do think that if you guys are gonna do anything, you should also codify a two, a two-term lim, an eight-year limit, okay? So if you're gonna go to four years, two terms, if you're staying at two terms, you know, you should add a four-year. I think that that's an important thing. Otherwise, you'll end up like Niles. And that's a problem too. But I don't know what the right answer is. This is a problem. You're right. The caucus is non-political until the election, because then if you wanna go against the caucus, it's impossible. But I think the caucus is better than an open election, as just looking around the country is. But then, of course, the caucus is also has its own political issues and its own short-term citedness, and people get on it for the wrong reasons and no one cares. You know, if you think it's hard being on the council, you should try being concerned about the village in general and not being on the council, and then trying to fight everyone to get any information. That's even more tired.
Thanks, Ted. May I have a motion to adjourn?
I'm moved.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? We stand adjourned.
Chris.
Thank you.